Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for being here. Today is February 19th, 2018, and it's just two minutes after six. We'll go ahead and open this meeting with prayer. I've asked Alex Knighton to come up and do that for us. One of our officers.
Good day, everyone. It's gracious, heavenly waters. We have our head before the, at the beginning of this council meeting, as we gather here as community members to better our community here within the city limits of Pace and our surrounding area. We ask that we may have like guidance, and that we may be able to be influenced, that we may be able to lead the city in direction that can better not only our working experience here, but also incorporate humility and compassion towards others. And say these things about building this meeting. It's very interesting.
Thanks, Alex. Also, I've asked Joseph St. Peter to lead us in the pledge. I believe, Joseph, you're in the police academy, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Okay, we'll move on to be the consent agenda, crew of minutes for the regular meeting of September 5th, 2018. Do I have a motion to accept?
I move that we accept the minutes from September 5th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so moving second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to C, petitions. We'll go ahead and open the public forum. I believe we'll be okay there. Anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda, time limit of three minutes, less if you can be very concise, and we'll go ahead to that point. Okay, it doesn't appear anybody wants to participate in the public forum, so we'll go ahead and move on. The Judge Dahlquist has something that he needs to be to at seven o'clock, so I would ask that we move his up to this point before we do staff and council reports. Could we do that? Judge O, you ready?
I'm ready. It's off from here. It's Caldwell. Probably Caldwell.
All right, the Chief couldn't make it on time here tonight. He's on his way, and he's hurting, so hopefully he doesn't meet up with the judge afterwards. But, so we have Officer Caitlin Caldwell, we recently hired. She graduated the police academy in April of this year. She has her two children here with her, Brooklyn and Bradley. We're excited to have Officer Caldwell. She's currently living in the Price area. We're hoping that she's gonna relocate to find town of Pace in her nearby, but that's her introduction.
You have to go through the highways to get here.
Yeah, right. I think she's been staying over in Provo area, so.
Officer Caldwell, come stand right here in the middle of the room and face the audience, please. That's fine. Whether you're right man or D F. I, Caitlin R. Caldwell, solemnly swear.
I, Caitlin R. Caldwell, solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the State of Utah.
And the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with failing.
Agreed.
Caitlin, after you do that, I would like to check your hand.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for discussing your schedule. Thank you, Doug.
Okay, we'll go back up to number two, staff reports, and then council reports. Any staff reports that need to be addressed.
I want that he is.
Come on up.
All right, again Sergeant Copley, Chief's on his way, but I don't have the figures that he normally gives you up. I just wanted to give you an update on the incident camp for the fire. We've been staffing that 24/7 with one officer. They've had some problems getting their commissioned officers there. They've been called nationwide, but with the hurricane, the other fires, the incident in Missouri as well, they haven't been able to get anybody. So, our officers have been taking that, at least one per four-hour shift, I think is what we've divided it up to, and we've staffed that pretty well by now. But, a lot of assistance from the surrounding cities as well have been coming in and taking different shifts at the canyon and at that park too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Council, just a couple of quick updates. They did start installing the pump today up at the golf course, so that should take about three days to get in, and then they'll do some testing, obviously make sure it's running well, but they did start that this morning, so we'll just, we'll check with them every day and see how that's going. And then Kent and his crew got all the tennis courts torn down, so if you drive by that, there's a lot of dirt there now that's smoothed out. So, it's done, or at least, they gotta get that done, then they're gonna start on the power to start moving that, 'cause if the pole's still kinda in the middle of that area.
I've already got a lot of compliments about the activity there.
Well, if it's dirt, we just throw up some nets and turn it into mud volleyball.
Maybe in the short term.
Oh, okay. And the sewer is fixed, so that is done, the road's reopened, so we've been busy lately, so, you know, with the fires that, we built the road yesterday out of the blue, they called them. Kent and I went up there, and we brought in about 400 tons of road base and built them a road out there where their camp, so that they could have better for their trucks to get in and out of there. So, we've been a little busy running around. If you have any questions, that's enough, that's about it.
Thank you, appreciate what you're doing.
Mayor, Council, a little update on the fires. Mayor and I have been going to a briefing every morning, and, but, we have had our crews, they needed some road base put in the area, it's getting a little muddy, so Kent had Kenny Sane bring some road base up, and he graded it. The police have been manning the area as well, we've had, they're thinking about putting some temporary power in there. Their generators haven't worked as well as they would like, and so they asked Ron for a quote, we'd have to put a couple of poles and a transformer, it's about $10,000, but they've, they haven't got back to him yet on that one.
Where is this camp?
It's at the soccer fields and where the old rodeo arena was.
You said you were bringing in rodeo, but it was a secondary one, I was wondering.
No, so, and, and we talked to them today about getting some water on the soccer fields. We think it's gonna be an extended stay, I think, for them, so Carl's gonna do some watering with individual sprinklers tomorrow in the areas where they don't have tents. And then if we get some of those areas watered, we may have to move their tents to another location, get the field, just don't want it to die. It's getting down to the end of the season, but we still wanna make sure that it comes back with the grass, so. There are a lot of things going on, the fire, they feel pretty good about it overall, there's not a lot of containment yet, I think on the Bald Mountain it was 12%, I think, they said this morning, a little more, 20-some percent on the, on the Polk Creek fire, so. Day to day, and just check the website if you want, Amanda's keeping that, we get a new update from each, each of the fires, and she put those on, plus a new map every morning of where the fire has spread to. They do an infrared flyover every night, and so it keeps growing, I think it's over 100,000 acres right now, and, so, if you have any questions, call, if we don't know the answer, we can get it, but, we did, the mayor did send out a robo-call, giving a little information on the fire and having them direct them to the website or Facebook. We're trying to keep that up to date every day, so people can go there and get accurate information.
Have they given any, any information of when, like, the golf course can open, or anything like that?
There's no, I don't think they're gonna go home and tell the rains or snows come, but they, they're starting conversations on, with Elk Ridge, Woodland Hills, and that's our golf course too, of, you know, when and if residents can go back to their homes, so they check it every day, they have, they really actively fought the Pace and Canyon, so it doesn't come over. That's one of their priorities today, and also they've had some hotshot teams go in above Woodland Hills and Elk Ridge, they're trying to get the ridges safe so that they can get the residents back into the homes, and that would coincide with the golf course being open. They're still dipping out of the golf course pond, and For Bay Pond, we had to send the water, an employee, Jesse, up and open up the Big East a little bit more, so that, 'cause it was starting to, the ponds were going down. So this morning Chad Knapp said that it's just perfect, there's enough water coming in, it's not spilling over, so we're not losing any, but it's not going down, so they keep, they keep dropping a lot of water in the area, so.
Are they taking water out spring late now? Looked like today this morning, what?
We haven't heard that they've taken any this spring late.
Like helicopter?
If they are, we need to add that to their list. And I know they, they set up a portable retardant, little pond over in Salem. They can't, they can't use retardant on the very steep slopes with the big planes, so they were gonna do the helicopters with retardant, where they can hit spots they can't get with the airplanes, and so I think that was set up today, and they're moving forward on that as well, so. It's a, it's a moving target, a lot of fire, but our crews are up in Maple Dell protecting structures, and they patrol the For Bay a lot at nighttime, so everybody's busy, and we hope they can get contained quickly, but it, it will be a long-term fire, there's some workers, I think that the fall rains and snow are gonna have to come before, before they leave.
One of the gentlemen that gave us the briefs wanted to clarify that there's a common misconception that the airplanes can take care of putting it out, all they can do is hydrate the area and flow it down a little bit. Okay, Carl.
Mayor, Council, and public, most of the things, some of the things have already been talked about, but I do wanna publicly, publicly thank Kent and his crews for the demolition at the Pickleball future sites, as well Ron Crump, I put him in touch today with the Arctic Tech so they can coordinate the transformer and the placement of the electricity there. Also, on the soccer fields, there was a comment regarding later games on the softball field, so we met as well with Chuck up there and logistically worked that out. We'll have our last games at 8:30 rather than 9:30, so they'll be ending an hour early, earlier, so they should end at about 9:30, and their lights out is 10 o'clock, so we hope that works. We just have softball games this Thursday, tomorrow, and then Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, I think that should be the end of everything there, and then as far as the field flag football season, we'll see what we do and what we play, so. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
I'll be fast. All right, so I wanted to talk about the benefit counter we're having on Friday, so I'm gonna hurry and tell you kinda how this came to be. You know, it takes a couple of months for me to plan an event, and my good friend Cody Robbins is in my ward, he's an excellent country singer, local here in Utah County, sings quite a bit for different events, and so, he's in my ward, so we're texting each other during church, and he's like, Janine, I wanna take some of my singer friends and go to the local fire department, Santa Claus, Salem, Payson, just to kinda, you know, entertain, just to kinda, what do you think? And I thought, it's a great idea, you know, that's awesome idea. And then he texted me again, he says, Kate, I've got 12 acts who want to help, and I says, well, I have a venue for you. So that's how this kinda came to be. Seriously, by the end of our three-hour church session, him and I together, we both taught Sunday School, we had it planned, we even had Pace and Chronicle on board to put it in the paper this week, and Honey Bucket, I have everyone's numbers in my phone, he has all the entertainment on his phone, and by the end of the time we were out of church, the whole thing was planned, and all of our sponsors were planning.
I'm glad you put the church time you could use.
Yeah, that's right. But I did teach Sunday School, and so did he, so we did go check. And anyway, I was just kinda letting you know that sometimes events like this are supposed to happen, and I think it's important, not only for, as for Pace and City, we are just offering the event, the venue for free, other than that Cody has a team together who will take care of the money, everything else, I mean, I'll just provide him with two tents for the money, we'll use the same tents we use for salmon supper, 'cause they're, they're all closed in, that way it's, you know, pretty protected. They already have, we'll have police help here with a couple of us, buters, but also officers from Salem to escort, the money will be distributed right into Salem Distribution, it'll stay local, it'll help firefighters, evacuees, and if we have enough left over, it will help also replant, we're hoping, that's our goal. So, anyway, we're really excited, Friday at 6:00 PM, many great entertainers will be here, and I think it'll be a great time for us to even just be together, so. $10 each, eight and older, so eight and younger's free, let's see, your first responders, if you come with your uniform, a shirt, you're free, your family's free, $40 for a family, so, we hope that that is a good number where people will wanna come and help, so, anyway. So, any questions?
Just thank you for putting it together.
I haven't had a long time to advertise.
No, but it's been, we, I've been surprised, it's really gone. I've had a lot of phone calls, so, I'm hoping for at least 1,000 plus, so, okay, so that means you have to come. Yes, I counted each of you, so that is the plus, okay.
Mayor and Council, I have two items. The first one is related to the fire. I hope all of you knew that we were about a week or so away from launching our audio tour for the Niibloupe National Senior Byway.
I'm glad Doug's not here.
Unfortunately, with these fires, it's left us in a position where as senior byway partners, we need to get together, we're actually planning on getting together next week to discuss how we move forward with that. We don't know how long the closures will be, we don't know if there'll be any season left, there's a lot of rehab work that's gonna have to be done, there's been some suggestions, even from the Forest Service, of maybe we alter the audio tour to address the fire and maybe the, the evolution of, of the forest, and include that in an audio tour that's launched next year. So there's a lot of different ideas that are thrown out there, but I did wanna give you an update on that. We were hoping to have it launched right in time for the fall colors, and so, we're sort of in a bind right now, but we'll keep you updated on that after the byway partners meet next week. And then also, I did send an email, some of you have responded, but we're looking towards finalizing some dates for the general plan update. We wanna have a joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting the end of October to provide feedback on the workshops, on the scenario planning, the demographics, all of the stuff that has been put together to this point, and then also follow that up by a fall work session, or a workshop with the public, so.
I did confirm that that date was available in October, but just so you're aware, it's the day before fall break, so I don't know how much drive you need.
No, and that's the feedback I need, I mean, if that date is not going to work, you know, I, I don't know how many people.
Yeah, a lot of people, it's.
Are also hunting, you know.
That you're talking about invading Anaheim weekend?
Right, no.
No, I'm gonna be yellow still.
And we can, and I can definitely share that information with the consultant team to say, you know, with the deer hunt and with fall break, we may wanna push that into the first week in November, and then maybe we have the, the public workshop, maybe the second week in November, or something like that. So, no, that's the feedback, exactly the feedback that I needed, I don't wanna find ourselves advertising, then get down to that point and not have a good turnout, so, anyway, I will share that information with them, so, thank you for responding.
Thank you. Doesn't appear any other staff this morning to come up, we'll move on to council reports. Wanna start with this?
Well, I just wanted to thank everyone that's been involved since this terrible fire started. I know everyone up here has tried to be involved, and the ones who have been involved lately, and Mayor having to come home off this vacation early, that wasn't good. But yes, I just want, I wanna thank everyone that has been out there helping, we really appreciate it.
Right on fire, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's been an amazing week, it's, I appreciate what everybody has done, there's been a lot of people out there, and the donations have been incredible, I mean, the community has really had a tremendous outpouring of support, I think the, the difficult thing will be as it goes on, we'll continue to need support, you know, and the immediate donations kind of overwhelmed everybody, and they kinda ran out of room, but here in the next two or three days or week, I think there'll probably be a need for more donations for firefighters and evacuees and other things. I appreciate the fire department for letting me, escorting me up the canyon, and for the staff and all the hard work that they've done. I would like to see if we can get the city to share the, either the Utah Sheriff's Office updates, or the, you went to Wasatch, Kesh, National Forest updates. I think what I found is that information has been what, what people have been wanting and craving the most, and it was hard to get to the first three days because nobody knew anything, and that was, that was kinda the universal thing. Since that time, these other organizations are on top of it, and they're putting out good information, sometimes multiple times a day, I think as a city we should be sharing that, we don't have to come up with it, but I think we need to be sharing it to our webpage and our Facebook updates. For down the road, maybe not today, we are going to have to worry about animal abatement, we're gonna have all sorts of wildlife in our community, and we need to have a discussion what we potentially do in that scenario, and again, this is down the road too, but how do we start working with or encouraging the county and the federal service to, to make sure that we don't have landslides dam up our canyons and our waterways. So those are my, my concerns, and I had one other one, I didn't give them what it was.
Think about it, bring it up when you can. I would like to add something to, on some of the issues that the councilman just brought up. We did attend that brief this morning, and it represented for the Division of, I think, Wildlife Resources, or Natural Resources Funds too, did talk about having animals come into our, down into our community, and they gave us a number, I didn't write it down, hopefully they, were you able to write that down?
I think I did.
Okay, yeah, but he did say, if we do have those kinda issues, they were talking about cougars that have come down, he said, please give them a call, and they will respond post haste and take care of those issues for us, so, that'll be ongoing now, we want a long-term one too as well.
Right, right.
Also, I've been in touch with Vanessa Hansen, she's helped with the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, and also with the warehouse that's in the ALC, she may be us, them, everybody aware of that meeting, and individually I've talked to her about some BYU tickets that BYU is going to donate to the first responders, as well as the people that are displaced from this fire. They also have available 10,000 masks if anybody's in distress and are having problems with the, the air quality, they're gonna be available at the warehouse. I too would like to thank everyone that's been involved in this effort, it's taken me just a little while to get back running up with all that's occurred, but appreciate all the, the many volunteers, the professionals that are fighting the fire, our professional fire department that's interacting with all the other area fire departments, so, much thanks to all those that are involved.
And I wanna echo too how thankful I am for all of the first responders and our firefighters, and, I don't know, I feel like maybe we need to have a banner hung or something in town thanking all of them. I can't even imagine the work that they're doing. And I also wanna thank Kent on getting rid of that ugly eyesore in the corner of the park. I've had a number of the neighbors talk to me about how wonderful it looks, and all that's gone is the cement, and it's all smoothed out, but they just are so excited to have something. They worry about, we've especially got one neighbor there that worries about a lot of drug transactions that he thinks goes on across the street in that parking lot, and he knows that this is gonna make a difference, because it's gonna be used, and he's hoping it'll, he's super excited, so I wanna thank them too.
You reminded me of the, of the lady that came up to me and said, Mayor, I gotta give you a hug, and she gave me a hug because of that tennis court being gone, so I was a factor of that.
I just have a few things, ones I wanna thank everybody that has helped with the fires, especially our firemen, and one thing that you might put out there a little bit, is I just heard from somebody today that their insurance company, they'll actually pay for hotel stays for two weeks, so, might let people know that, and then check with their insurance company, so they don't have to stay other places. And now I just wanted to give a shout out to Doug for spending a lot of time in the first three days, just putting out stuff, letting people know in the community, I know it went out to everybody at my stake and everything like that, so, thanks Doug, that was a great service. We'll have to hire you for our PR guy.
It takes a lot of time here.
Let me see, last thing is we regrettably have canceled our golf event, just logistics, if it's open, just trying to get people there and then make sure they're coming, and it's hard to talk to anybody about coming when, when we don't know if it's even gonna be there. What we have done though, is we're inviting the people that were planning on coming, to come anyway, and we'll give them a free golf that morning, give them some swag, so it'll still, they still, if they set time apart, be here and do something, but, what we're gonna do again next year, we already have a date set for September 25th, so, have a bigger and better next year, so, that's all.
Well, people always say, last is best of all the game, but it just makes me look like there's nothing left to say, 'cause they pretty much summed it up, I was gonna thank Doug for all of his hard work, and Brian took that from me, so, but anyway, and I, and I do appreciate, we rallied right together, I had a chance to go up and talk with some of the parks people as they were prepping things, and brought that set of bathrooms back from the dead, I don't think it had been opened in 40 years, we kind of surmised, but anyway, it looked really nice inside, they cleaned it up, gave them some flushing toilets up there, which was really good there at firefighter's base camp, but, anyway, I appreciate the, the staff and all that they do to, to make us look good in a quick moment like that, so.
You would like to add just a couple things, as I went through the community and others from other communities have really been complimentary of what we have been able to, and you've been the focal point of that, but as time has went on, I know we spoke with Amanda, and she's trying to update those as, as they come in as well, so, other people in other communities are noticing that we're doing a good job.
Let me see. Last thing is, we regrettably have canceled our golf event. Just logistics of it's open, just trying to get people there and then make sure they're coming, and it's hard to talk to anybody about coming when we don't know if it's even gonna be there. What we have done though, is we're inviting the people that were planning on coming to come anyway, and we'll give them a free golf that morning, give them some swag, so it'll still, they still, if they set time, be here and do something. But we're gonna do it again next year. We already have a date set for September 25th, so have a bigger and better next year. So, that's all.
Well, people always say, "Last is best of all the game," but it just makes me look like there's nothing left to say. 'Cause they pretty much summed it up. I was gonna thank Doug for all of his hard work, and Brian took that from me, though. But anyway, and I do appreciate, we rallied right together. I had a chance to go up and talk with some of the parks people as they were prepping things, and brought that set of bathrooms back from the dead. I don't think it had been opened in 40 years, we kind of surmised. But anyway, it looked really nice inside. They cleaned it up, gave them some flushing toilets up there, which was really good there at the firefighter's base camp. But anyway, I appreciate the staff and all that they do to make us look good in a quick moment like that, so. You would like to add just a couple things, as I went through the community and others from other communities have really been complimentary, what we have been able to, and you've been the focal point of that. But as time has went on, I know we spoke with Amanda, and she's trying to update those as they come in as well. So, other people in other communities are noticing that we're doing a good job.
Mayor, if you do have other web links that need to go on our site, I'll be glad to take them and get them to Amanda. So, if you know which ones those are, I'll be proud. We've got 10 on our website right now that are, and if people don't know, they give out the information differently for poll and for ball, and there's Facebook pages and that's where you'll see the actual video updates. And if you become familiar with the times, it's actually a live feed at the time that those updates are there. I'll be glad to...
Yeah, that's wonderful.
I did have one citizen calling today and ask me, they said, "Did it look like the pre-evacuation for the edge of town had been lifted? Is that true, or is it still..."
It's still under pre-evacuation.
Okay.
Fire looks like it picked up today quite a bit. In fact, that was the other thing I was going to say. Are you done?
Yes. No, I just, I just wanted to make sure that it was still in place and that they were still prepared for it.
So, the other thing, and I don't mean to second-guess firefighters, but there's a lot of green area up there, and if at all possible, if they don't, if we can get that contained without bag burning all of it and putting out the hotspots. I mean, obviously the preference is getting the fire under control. If we can somehow encourage them to, ultimately, I'll leave it up to them, but if we can let them know how important that remaining green space is to the communities.
Mayor and I did talk to the liaison.
We did, thank you.
And made that clear, and I think it helped.
I really do, I think.
I think it's important to give the wildlife a little place. Use that as our avenue, somewhere for them to hide out in the camp living city.
And just to Doug's point, if you look on our website, it has the UN of National Forest Facebook, it has Bald Mountain Fire, it has Polk Creek. It has the interactive map, so that we try to link all the different sites you go to. You might just go to our webpage.
Okay.
Can I have one?
Go ahead.
I just have a question. On that house that's burned down there by Barnett's School as you turn, are they gonna get that cleaned up anytime soon?
Well, I've talked to Dave, I've talked to the fire chief. That's the one that was kitty-cornered from Almans Wilson's, I think.
Shirley Wilson.
Yeah, Shirley Wilson. You know, and we've talked about using our resources to get that taken care of, it'd just be a coordination thing, I believe, and I think we're all on the same page to get that. What I liked about it done before school started, but as far as I'm concerned, that's something that maybe we haven't addressed because things jumped up in front, but that is something I think we should do.
Eddie, we talked about it, I'll check with Scott.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to scout attendance certificates. Don't believe we have any, so we'll move from there. Down to the action item D, resolution, Spring Side Meadow, Platte D residential design and materials. Daniel, I guess you're up.
Okay. So, recently we covered Spring Side Meadow, Platte E, with the design standards, with modifying it, because DeR Horton's now the builder, so if that rings out. I'll show the pictures really quick, once this is up. So, DeR Horton's requesting a modification of the standards to allow DeR Horton product. That includes the LP siding. I think some of, the mayor went out there and saw it, and here we go. So, with Platte D, so Salisbury product, this stucco with 25% brick or stone. Platte D, oops, Platte D is this area right here. So, this is down Spring Side, 280 West, 1730 South, and whatnot. So, it's part of an existing neighborhood. So, this area is all built out of the Salisbury product. So, again, here's Phase D. We discussed Phase E for allowing the DeR Horton product down here, so now it would be allowing it here. Here's Salisbury product, so it would kind of, I don't know, be a change a little bit for that neighborhood, but it is nice product as you'll see. So, again, here's the location on the satellite, you can see where it's located. So, the current homes, we see the stucco with brick and stone, with all the homes like that. I think mostly council members are familiar with these homes that have been out here. The DeR Horton product, again, with the LP siding, so these are pictures we looked at before, some elevations we looked at before. So, you can see the LP siding, and the house is a little bit different, so that's the main thing. We wouldn't require the 25% brick or stone on all of them. In fact, DeR Horton already knows the product, and so we would be specifically allowing the list of approved DeR Horton products. So, that's really it. And if you have any questions, the architect from DeR Horton's here. I don't know if there are any questions, but we did notice the neighborhood. No one from the neighborhood showed up. I probably put the wrong year or something on the notice, so. This is the right date. But I don't know, are there any questions?
I'd like to comment. I was, as you said, I did go out there, Dave and I actually got lost going back there. Two roads, the same name, just real close together. One in Maple and one in Spanish Fork. But I was very impressed with the building material. It, as we were told, that it has a 50-year maintenance-free ability that has proven itself to be good. So, I think it's a good...